To order the Monday, June 9 meeting of the Common Council, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
And Alderperson Yers.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvie is absent and excused this evening.
We have a quorum, so we will proceed with the meeting. I know we have a number of people in the audience this evening. A number of people I know are speaking during public comment. We're also going to have a swearing in ceremony from some of the new hires for the Police Department. Once that occurs, we're going to have a few more seats available. So with that, there should be a sign up sheet at the podium. And if anyone wishes to speak on any item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda, we would ask that you would come to the podium for the benefit of us and for the benefit of those people watching at home and in the audience here this evening, if you would identify yourself, give your name and address. And we don't put any time limitations on as to how much people can speak, but we would just ask that you respect the other people in the audience. So with that, we will open it up for public comment. If there's anyone that wants to speak on any issue, someone always has to go first. Nope, we have public comment at the beginning of the meeting.
My name is Glenn Shana. I live at 1234 Scenic Ridge Drive, which is in the Scenic Ridge neighborhood. And I'm here tonight, the Plan Commission did approve a 62 unit apartment building for the Scenic Ridge neighborhood. And I want to write some notes here to say right up front, I'm opposing that development. I've found by talking to several people that the development actually goes back to 2006 when the developer's plan was signed off. And what was nice about the neighborhood was the fact that the developer had, you could pick your own builder. So that was very good to us. We actually built a house with a zero step garage. We're not rich people, but those lots were expensive because you could have your own builder. And then as the developments came through and the more and more houses were developed, we are at count right now about 105 houses that are lived in right now, and 18 houses are completed or just about to be moved into. The development that we're talking about is on Lot 2, and that's a 62 unit development that we're opposing. It's made up of studio, one bedroom and two bedroom. But the largest thing I've noticed on the map is that it's actually like on a dead end area. There's a U-shaped road that connects to these two buildings and the third one that's coming in the future. And so it's not like it has its own access. All of the dwellers of that building are going to have to come through the neighborhood streets to get to Locust Drive. And that's my biggest concern. But there are other things, and that's that the fact that right now the park, we have a lot of kids in the neighborhood, the park is already full. And we're not even fully developed as a single family park. We're at 105 houses. We're going to add with a total of three buildings, 100 more units. And that's going to be all on one end feeding, like I say, these streets. It has a nice feel to it right now in the neighborhood, but it's going to change because now when you drive down Locust, there's going to be this 35 foot buildings, two of them down in the valley, although they're not that low. They're only half of a roof height below the rest of the single story houses, I'm sorry, the single family, two star houses that are on Chapel Royal. And this is the street that I was most concerned about was Chapel Royal because all of these cars that are coming from this development will go down Acker Lane, which feeds right into Chapel Royal. One of the things that the developer had said was that these are going to be high end apartments. And to keep them high end apartments, they're actually going to be onsite management. He also said that to make the scales of building work out with onsite management, you have to have at least 100 units. While we've got the 62 here, we don't know what's going to happen with the next building, the 40 unit one, but right now we'd like to have some kind of guarantee, some kind of documentation that says he will continue to use high quality construction materials because as the next two years go on, if labor goes up or construction materials go up and the SIs start coming back, that makes me concerned as far as keeping this a high end apartments. Also, I'm not aware that there's any document that keeps him to his staying that he's going to have onsite management. Or if he decides not to build that third building, then his economy of scale won't work out right, and pretty soon the onsite management is going to disappear. So those are pretty much the thoughts. And in regards to what the developer's going to do, I don't know how to put this in place, but I really would like to be involved with the third building because it feels like we were basically steamrolled over with this. 2006, they put all the plans in, nobody was there to vote anything, only the Plan Commission was overseeing what was going on. And now when I look in the covenants, I find out that the Lot 2 specifically says the developer will use the Architectural Reviewer to pass this. Well, guess what? The developer is the Architectural Reviewer because we don't have a Neighborhood Association yet. So it's like everything is one person making this happen. And that concerns me because we're not involved in the process. In that regard, at the Plan Commission's meeting last week, there's two different people that said, this is not the first time this has come up where we actually have people being concerned about large multifamily developments immediately adjacent to the single family developments. So basically, my thoughts are the fact that I don't, my first one, I don't want this to go through, but if it does go through, can we send it back to the Plan Commission to review some of these things and try and get some of the traffic issues resolved and in place? The third one, I think that's important to mention, the city engineer said that with this complex, there's going to be 400 trips per day by the car count that he estimated. So we also have the Locust Bridge that is being redone to make it wider. And that bridge will be shut down for four weeks, I'm sorry, for 12 weeks. So from my standpoint, it sure would be a lot nicer to have that bridge done and in place before all this additional traffic comes through Locust because it's going to be heck probably on the neighborhood next to us because they're going to have to use, we're all going to have to use the back way through that neighborhood and you're going to add another 62 units to that also. So I guess that's the thoughts I have. So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. And what we will do is when we get to this portion on the agenda, we will address the concerns that are brought up in public comment rather than addressing them now.
That makes sense. Okay, thank you. And you want us to sign up then?
If you would, please. And whoever wishes to speak next can certainly start working their way up to the podium. It could be on the same issue or another issue. That's right. We can pass them around. Thanks, Brian.
So my name is Brian Rizzo. I'm here to talk about kind of the same topic. I was going to talk about something else, which was to bring up the budget a little bit, what seemed like an excessive amount of security for a Common Council meeting. But it seems as though that's taken care of, so congratulations to the new officers to be. I live in Scenic Ridge as well. I live right on the corner of Locust and West Chapel Royal. I personally am not, I don't have a huge issue with the idea that it's an apartment building per se. My main concern is traffic. And I've let my inner Photoshop self kind of show through besides what the current plan is to say, is it possible to have either solitary access drive be off of Locust, which would alleviate the traffic from having to come through West Chapel Royal? Or at least if, I know that there's some disability requirements from ease of access for people in wheelchairs and whatnot, that it would possibly be that instead of a solitary access from Locust Drive, that potentially two access points. So that maybe the majority of people, depending on what portion of the apartment complex that they would live in, would maybe choose to take the sooner access off of Locust as opposed to migrating their way down all the way through West Chapel Royal. Like I said, personally, I would rather it be single family homes, but I understand in the idea that when I was younger and I was seeking out living in an apartment, I wanted a really nice apartment and didn't want to live in a crappy apartment in a bad place of town. So if I was younger and I was looking for an apartment, I love living where I'm living and I certainly would want to live there too. So the idea of other people who would be just as equally interested in living in an apartment in the neighborhood that I love to live in, I see no fault in that, even though personally, I certainly would rather them be single family homes. However, don't know if I would personally want to live that close to 18151. So basically, my idea is to ask as to if this is possible or to at least have somebody in the council be able to bring up or have an engineer or someone skilled in things that I know nothing about to be able to say why that this isn't a good idea or if there is the opportunity for it to be at least discussed or talked about. And that's it.
Thank you, Brian. Again, people can start working their way up to the podium if they wish to speak.
Hello, my name is Beth Procaro. I live at 1314 Scenic Ridge Drive. I'm speaking on the same matter. A couple of things is, again, I think some of you know from last week that I am opposed to this. We actually held a neighborhood meeting last Tuesday night. Many people were not informed that this was actually happening, although we all moved in knowing that there was potential for apartment buildings to be going in. The two things that came out of Tuesday night's meeting that I really want some consideration to is exactly what Brian was just talking about, is having a separate entrance to the apartment building. We learned last week that this would potentially be 400 extra trips in and out of our neighborhood a day. There are children that live on that street and we certainly want to keep it safe. And the second thing is, my understanding is the rent that they were going to charge for the studio would be around $800 up to, I don't know, 1300, 1400 for a two bedroom. The other consideration would be to the developer, Brian, if we, if they could bump those up a little bit because quite honestly nowadays, $800 for an apartment is not that much money. So if we're really going to be building high end apartments, that's what we would ask for. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I appreciate your efforts in pulling that neighborhood meeting together.
Hi, my name is Peter Philandrinos. I also live in Scenic Ridge on Chapel Royal Drive, where you're going to see a lot of the traffic coming through. You know, we moved there last summer and we were aware there's going to be a complex there. And I do agree that I'd like to see more single family homes. My biggest concern is the children and in the mornings. If you look at where your bus stops are currently located, it's right on Acker and Chapel Royal Drive. And if you're going to have 400 possibly a day cars going down there, you have right now up to 12 kids that are on that corner waiting for school buses. And every morning, I watch many people going to work, going not right through that stop sign, they're going right past it, and they're not even looking at the kids. Now you're going to add 400 trips back and forth. With our neighborhood, we have a very youthful neighborhood. It's great, a lot of kids. That's why people move there. That's why we move there. I think the board would like, I'd like to see if they're going to build a complex there, again with Brian to back that up, that there needs to be a different access for that. Because I'll tell you, I don't think anybody in this room would like to see one incident happen where a kid is hurt because we have too much traffic on one street. And I know my kids, I'd like to see them be able to walk to school safely, know that they can stand on the corner, especially on a winter day that might be icy, and not have to worry about so much traffic. You look at the end of that day, about 3 o'clock when schools get there, you have about eight, nine cars that are parked in that corner as well, picking up their children. So you're going to have cars parked around that area, you're going to have cars driving in and out constantly. That's a lot of traffic for a neighborhood. And I don't think any of us in the Scenic Ridge area, especially on Chapel Royal Drive, feel that's going to be beneficial for our children more than anything. And so my suggestion is when you decide to make the votes, and I don't know how all that works, I stay out of it, but I think please look at the children and the people, kids that are waiting every day at the school bus and ask, is that safe for them to have that many kids or cars in the morning going to school and drive by? So that's all I got to say.
Anyone else who wishes to speak on this agenda item or anything else?
My name is Heather Royer, and I live at 601 Hickory Court in Verona. And I thank you for this opportunity to speak this evening. I have been attending Sugar River United Methodist Church since 2005, and I currently serve in leadership, in children's ministries, in the praise band, and on the worship design team. At a time when many churches are closing their doors and struggling with attendance, Sugar River is one of the vibrant new churches in this community and in the state. Sugar River exists for family, friends, and neighbors to connect, grow, and serve in our relationship with God and with one another. Clearly, this mission is resonating with people. Our congregation, which consists of people from Verona and the surrounding communities, many of whom are here with us this evening, want to connect, they want to grow, and they want to serve. And Sugar River creates an environment where people can do just that. Verona takes pride in its small town feel. We all know it as hometown USA. I believe that this small town feeling comes from neighbors being connected with one another, growing in their relationships, and serving one another in their times of need. This is precisely the mission of Sugar River. I understand that Brian Driscoll has shared with you a comprehensive list of how Sugar River lives out our mission and service in this community and beyond. I would just like to take a moment to highlight a couple of examples to further confirm how Sugar River is a vital component to this community. Each summer, Sugar River holds a worship service in the park where we emphasize serving in our community. Following the worship time, the entire congregation, young and old, goes out to work on service projects in the Verona community that have been identified by our missions team. Some members clean the parks, others help elderly or disabled people take care of home projects that they aren't able to do on their own. I've led a group of people to sing and visit people at the area nursing homes. The response from those we serve is incredibly positive, and the experience of us being able to live out our faith is beyond words. Neighbors helping neighbors, a beautiful picture of a hometown. We have a vibrant youth community at Sugar River, and actually, this is what our church service normally sounds like on Sundays. We're very used to it, which is why I can absolutely speak through it. But we have a vibrant youth community, and from a very young age, we encourage even our youngest to participate in service opportunities. These range from stocking the shelves of the food pantry to having our high school youth travel to Mississippi to help those recover from Hurricane Katrina. One of the most poignant examples of the success of our youth ministries is the generosity and servitude of, I've been our youngest members. Brayden is a seven-year-old little boy who attends Sugar River. And he decided that instead of presents for his birthday this year, he would ask people to bring donations to help support the high school mission trip. I know this didn't even cross my mind at age seven, but for Brayden, it did. And he actually raised $300 to help support the high school youth trip. But Brayden isn't alone. Nine-year-old Sophie collected $300 to support the Jody Lou Lung Cancer Foundation for her birthday. Nine-year-old Matthew collected donations for the Humane Society for his birthday. And six-year-old Jack, instead of gifts, collected two carloads of food for the Verona food pantry. What an example they are to all of us. With this thriving youth community, I would argue we're better for us to make our new home than right next to the schools. Most of what I've had to say tonight has been from the perspective of a Sugar River member. But before I conclude, I want to speak to you as a mom, a mom of two beautiful children, a four-year-old little girl, and a 14-month-old little boy. When my daughter was two, she went on her first mission trip. The Sugar River Missions Team had made us aware that an elderly resident, a veteran who had chronic health problems, needed some assistance with yard work. My family volunteered to help, and my husband thought that our two-year-old and her curly hair and pigtails would make a perfect assistant. Her skill was to simply smile. We didn't know this gentleman. He was not a Sugar River member, but my family watered his plants. We made him smile. He made us smile. We actually shared lemonade with one another. We made a new friend and a new neighbor, and my daughter began to witness the beauty of serving. As I conclude, I leave with you this last thought. The city of Verona webpage contains a letter written by the mayor, and it reads that Verona is a special community with a lot to offer, and I would agree. It says that I hope you feel like Verona can be your hometown USA. Verona is my hometown. I've chosen to make it my hometown, and a large part of that is because of Sugar River United Methodist Church. We simply need a bigger mission outpost. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
I'll be right back, I promise. Hi, my name is Brian Driscoll. I live at 9 Byhoffer Court in Madison. I'm the building team's leader from Sugar River United Methodist Church. And to start off, I just want to thank the mayor, thank the City Council President, and thank all the City Council members for giving us this opportunity again. And I especially want to thank the city of Verona staff that have been really supportive through this process. And not to forget any thanks, I want to thank the Plan Commission for last week's meeting. We all understand that the issue of Wildcat Lanes and Sugar River United Methodist Church is not an easy decision, and we know that you're not going to take it lightly. And I just want to remind the council of a few topics and not take too long because we all want to see these gentlemen get sworn in too. Sugar River has been in the community for over 10 years. We're in the business of transformation in people's lives, and we're hoping with this opportunity, we get a chance to transform a building and use that as a tool to continue to transform people's lives. Also, as Ms. Royer had mentioned, there's a lot of community service going on. And again, the fact sheet that was provided to you a couple of meetings ago provides many local examples, state examples, and international examples. And you can all breathe a sigh of relief in closing. I just want to say that Sugar River United Methodist Church appreciates the public support that we received from the Plan Commission last week with a vote of five to one. And we also appreciate the previous support from the mayor, as well as six of the City Council members during the last public meeting. Sugar River United Methodist Church leadership, congregation members will do our best to continue to add to the vibrancy of the downtown Verona area. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Hi, I'm Rachel Della Bru. I live at 138 West Chapel Royal Drive in the Senate Ridge community. I would like to reiterate what Brian and Pete has already shared with you about the traffic concerns that's going to be coming through our neighborhood. I too have lost a family member at a very young age because he chased a ball out in the road. It was very devastating. I have three children with me who I love dearly, and I don't want the same thing to happen to them. I'm very, very concerned. In addition to that, I would like for you to also be aware that we do have special needs children on the street lives across from me. It's a concern as it is to just watch after our children, but if you put the additional roads, the cars out on the roads, I'm really concerned. You know, I know you're mostly parents here in front of me. Just really think about the actions that you guys are going to do. That's all I ask.
Thank you, Rachel. Anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Anyone else who wishes to speak? I always ask the question three times, so here's your final opportunity. Anyone else who wishes to speak this evening under public comment? Seeing none, we are going to move along on the agenda. Next item is approval of minutes, including with your packet are the minutes of the May 27th meeting of the Common Council. What is your pleasure?
I move to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, seconded by Mr. Yers. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carried, and the minutes have been approved. Under mayor's business, we are going to start this evening with the swearing in of the new hires for the Verona Police Department. I would ask if Chief Cofflin would come forward and introduce the officers, please. Chief?
Hi, Mayor, and Council, thanks for the opportunity. The four officers that we're here to introduce tonight stem from three recruitment classes, and it's a little easier to present them to you in a group over time as opposed to one at a time. So if you guys, as I call your name, if you'd step up and then I'll share a little bit of information about each one of you. Officer Matt Morris. Phil Wickowitz. Michael Johnson. And Jonathan Clay. As I stated, I have the distinct privilege of introducing our last four hires. Matt Morris started with us on February 18th of 2013. He earned his associate degree in criminal justice in May of 2012 from Western Wisconsin Technical College in La Crosse. While in school, he volunteered with the La Crosse Police Department as a reserve officer. Matt also served four years in the US Army from 2001 to 2005 as a tank crewman and served in combat in both Kosovo and Iraq. Our next officer, Officer Edward Philip Wickowitz, started at the Verona Police Department on June 3rd of 2013. He attended the Recruit Academy at the Wisconsin State Patrol in Fort McCoy in 2007, and was subsequently employed as a Wisconsin State Trooper for six years prior to joining us here in Verona. He attended the University of Wisconsin-O'Clare and graduated in 2006 with a bachelor's degree in business management. Phil also served in the US Army from 2002 to 2010 as a medic, and this also included one tour in Afghanistan from 2004 to 2005. Officer Michael Johnson started his career with Verona on December 30th of 2013, and he was previously employed with the Iowa County Sheriff's Office as a corrections officer and dispatcher from January of 2007 until August of 2010, where he was then promoted to patrol deputy in August of 2010. Officer Johnson has also worked as a part-time officer for the city of Dodgeville and city of Mineral of Mineral Point Police Departments from October of '06 through December of 2013. Officer Johnson received a bachelor's degree in physical education from UW-Lacrosse in December of 2012, excuse me, December of 2002, and graduated from Madison Area Recruit Academy in October of 2006. And last but not least, Officer Jonathan Clay started his career with Verona on December 30th of 2013 as well. He received a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from the University of Wisconsin-Plattville in 2012, and prior to joining our department, Jonathan worked as a cheesemaker in Monroe. So, first, I'd like to thank all of you guys, especially two of you that have served our country for your service and your future service. All four officers are serving in the patrol division now, working solo by themselves. Our training program takes approximately six months, so all six of them are certified working solo patrol, and if you haven't seen them in the community, you will shortly. So, please join me in congratulating them.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Aye.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Having been appointed to the office of police officer.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
And will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
For helping that.
I just wanted to give an opportunity. If there's any family members here that have not taken photos, please come forward right now at this time. We can take a little break here. Is there anyone who wishes that they had taken a picture that didn't? Please do so. Please do so.
If you stand photos, I would give the best of you, but this is your chance to get
Just as a brief statement for the new officers, thank you so much for serving the City of Verona. I know my family, I know many families that have come to Verona. We've come here because of the schools, the tremendous school system. I know some seniors that have come here because of senior programs. We all have our reasons that we come to the city. But I always tell everyone that unless you feel safe and secure where you work, live, and play, it doesn't matter how good any of the other programs are. So, we thank you for what you bring to Verona, and also, I've been very proud of the councils that we had, this council and prior councils, that we are here to support you rather than to interfere with what you do on a daily basis. So, thank you very much. Thank you, Chief. Going along further with mayor's business, I did want to mention and make an appointment for the library board. I am making the appointment of Kristin Napier. Kristin and her husband Joe have lived in Verona for about nine years. Kristin graduated from UW-Madison, and she decided that she loved the area and wanted to stay in this area. She started working for Epic in 2012, and she has indicated to me that she has two children, ages six and four, who absolutely love to read. So, I would ask for your confirmation of the appointment of Kristin Napier to the Verona
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment.
We have a motion to confirm the appointment. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All those in favor of confirming the appointment of Kristin Napier signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and Kristin has been appointed, and I know the staff will get the information out to her. I also wanted to mention that I had the opportunity last week, Thursday, I believe it was, where Alders Doyle Steiner and Years and myself were at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Quality Cellar, the US Cell Store in Verona. They moved. That was a great event. I talked to a number of people there. And then, since I was there, I decided to walk over to the Brew's Brothers, the pub. Mr. Years was there as well. I had an opportunity to talk to the owner, Steve. And Steve made the comment to me, and I keep hearing this all the time with companies that do business in Verona, and as elected officials, this makes us proud. And Steve indicated to me that of all the cities that he's worked in, this has been the best place to work with the city staff. So, the city staff make us look good, and we ought to thank them for that. So, Adam, in particular, he mentioned you and Bill, but all the city staff, so thank you for that. And by the way, I was back there yesterday and had a burger. Awesome. Awesome.
I wasn't there.
He wasn't. And I had Pepsis both nights, so. That concludes the mayor's report, so we will move on to the administrators' report. Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
Yeah, thank you. I have a couple of updates this evening. First of all, for the fire and EMS project that the city has been working on, we'll be holding a second open house on that project this Wednesday from 6:30 until 8:00 p.m. That is going to be held at the current fire station location just north of us on Lincoln Street. The project architect will be there, as well as other members of the design team, with information on the latest floor plans, rendering, site plan. There's not going to be a formal presentation, but it'll be an open house format for people to drop in anytime during that time and ask any questions of the design team. The process is moving forward with that project. The city council had authorized proceeding with starting the bidding process. We're doing the bidding in two phases. First, bid pack number one is going to be for site work, foundation, building demolition for the existing fire station. Bids are due for that first package on the 19th of this month, and will be going to the city council for consideration on June 23rd. Bid package number two, which will include the bulk of the station construction, is scheduled to be opened on July 8th, and that would be going to council on July 14th. The intention would be to allow some site work and initial work to begin around the beginning of July, with construction starting after approval of that second bid package in the middle of July. The goal would be to have completion of the station in the spring of next year and occupancy and operations by mid-year of 2015. Coming up on the 16th of this month, on Monday, will be the board review meeting. This is the annual meeting to hear any objections or concerns related to the property tax assessments. That meeting will start at 6:00 p.m. Assessment notices have been sent out. However, since this is not a revaluation year, for most people in the community, assessments are not changing, and people would only have received notices if there was a change in their property, primarily to new construction or some modification being made to the property. And then finally, just wanted to announce for anyone that hadn't heard the dates yet, that Hometown Days does start this week, starting on Thursday, running through Sunday. Fireworks are scheduled for Thursday evening at 9:30 p.m., and the parade is scheduled for Sunday at noon. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Before we have questions, I'm going to have to ask in the back, we have to open those doors. We are subject to open meetings laws, and we do not want to violate state law. So, if you would open the doors, and if people out in the lobby area are too loud, we're just going to have to please remind them that they're going to have to quiet down. We enjoy our jobs, but we do not want to do our jobs from the Dane County Jail. Are there any questions for Mr. Burns? Mr. Years?
This isn't really a question. I just kind of wanted to jump in there with Mr. Burns, and I really hope people do show up to the open house at the fire department on Wednesday. I think it's really important that members of our community come and look at the building. This building, it is large, granted, but it offers us new opportunities that we don't have right now in terms of training and training with departments of both EMS and fire. So, this building's going to offer a lot of good things for Verona, and I highly suggest you come in and take a look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Other comments or questions on the administrators' report? Seeing none, we will move on then to the engineers' report. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Thank you. Start out with Scenic Ridge Phase 6. Contractor is currently doing some blasting work out there on the rock and performing site grading. Sanitary sewer installation should commence by the end of this week. All work in this phase is to be completed by the end of August. Prairie Oaks Phase 3. Site grading is ongoing. They also started sanitary sewer construction last week, and that should be completed by the end of this week, followed by the water main construction. Work on this project is scheduled for completion by the middle of August. Lincoln Street reconstruction just outside City Hall. The contractor has completed 70% of the replacement water main. All mainline water mains should be installed by the end of this week or early next week. Contractor will then start replacing the water services to the properties. Those water service replacements will take several weeks to complete. Following that, street grading will commence, followed by curb and gutter. Project should be complete by the end of August. That completes my report for this evening. I also would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gunlock? Seeing none, thank you, Bob.
Welcome.
We will begin then with committee reports, and first, we have Plan Commission. Mr. Linder, please.
I'll start by making a motion to approve Resolution R-014-026, approving a certified survey map for a land division located in the town of Verona at 7222 and 7226 Pine Row.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Mr. Linder?
I believe Mr. Sayer is going to expand upon that. Sure.
Mr. Sayer?
Request tonight is a CSM that's located within the town. We do have an ETJ policy located within the town that regulates all land division divisions. Normally, the minimum lot size in the town is 35 acres. However, in this case, we do have five exemptions listed in the ordinance, and this request tonight does meet one of those five exemptions. And what the one that I'm pointing to says is that if you aren't creating any new lots, we can approve it. So, the request tonight is basically shifting a lot line. There's two lots in Pine Row. One of the lots would be expanded, other lot would be shrunk, obviously, and they're doing this to accommodate a future, I think, horse use on the property. So, the Plan Commission reviewed it and recommended approval, seven to zero, because it does meet our ETJ ordinance. Thank you.
Adam, I know we have a lot of people in the crowd tonight. Can you just tell them what an ETJ is?
Sure.
In case they're interested?
Sure. ETJ stands for extraterritorial jurisdiction. It's an area that actually goes out about one and a half miles from the city's boundaries, and by state statute, we are able to review any land division within that one and a half-mile area. This parcel's about 2,000 feet from the city boundaries. Obviously, it falls within that area. So, any land division that occurs in the town, within that one and a half-mile area, we do review, and this is one of those that fell in that area.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments for Plan Commission or for staff? Questions or comments? Not seeing any, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-014-026. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder?
Next item is I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-014-027, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor institutional land use to be located at 415 West Verona Avenue.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Mr. Linder?
I think Mr. Sayer is going to talk about this one.
Mr. Sayer?
Sure. Andy, if you could turn the monitor on, please. Request tonight is a conditional use permit to allow indoor institutional land use in the former Wildcat Lanes property at 415 West Verona Avenue. It is a conditional use. The property is Zoned UC, which is urban commercial. Indoor institutional land uses, that's a church, is an allowable use within the UC district. However, there is also an overlay district on this property, which is the downtown use and overlay design district, and that does require a conditional use permit for indoor institutional land uses. So, it's a little confusing, but the bottom line is it does take a conditional use permit. This request was before the council, about a month ago now. It was an initial review to kind of, so the applicants could get some feedback. They did go to the Plan Commission meeting last Monday. Plan Commission reviewed it. Some of the discussion at that meeting included consistency with the downtown plan, the length of time this property has been for sale, and also the number of vacancies within the downtown. The Plan Commission did hold the required public hearing and recommended approval, five to one, of the conditional use permit. I'm happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Plan Commission members or for the staff? Questions? Comments? Mr. Years?
You know, this question, you know, it's required a lot of thought. I know there are people who really support the bowling alley in Wildcat Lanes. However, the property is set vacant for a long time, well, not vacant, but for sale for a long time, and, you know, Sugar River has done a lot for this community, and our community, one of the large arguments for Wildcat is that land is the taxable value of it. And I guess one of my arguments is that a city is worth more than its bottom line and what a church can do. And I've grown up in Verona, and, you know, being a member of one of the other churches in town, I've had the privilege of working with Sugar River in the ecumenical sense. They've always been strong participants in all of our ecumenical activities, and I have no doubt that that will continue. I think this would work well with revitalization down there in that area of town, help cleaning it up. I think this is going to be a good addition to the west end area. And so there, I would urge all of us to support the church in moving there. Like I said, it wasn't an easy decision, but I think this will benefit the community as a whole, and I want to thank Sugar River for their enthusiasm and the work they've already done for Verona.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Additional questions? Comments? Ms. Ricky?
I just wanted to ask a question about how additional people outside of church community members will be involved in this move and how the church is going to reach out to other community members. I asked about that in an email and got a nice response, and just wondered if it could be shared publicly.
I'm not certain who responded to that email, but I know Brian's here, and Pastor Gary is here as well. Brian?
So, excuse me, Alder Person Ricky, we exchanged some emails, and I think the purpose of the question you asked was how would Sugar River continue to engage other community members? And I guess the best answer to that is, we're going to continue to do a lot of the things we're currently doing. We're already involved with ecumenical items with other church organizations, and we're going to use this facility, hopefully, if it becomes approved tonight, as our mission outpost, as Ms. Royer had said. It's going to be a spot with which we start from and move out the doors. So, I'm not going to give you a laundry list of items that we're going to do. It will depend upon the community items or services that are needed at the time, but I would like to refer you back to the fact sheet that we provided you, that it gives a great baseline, I would say, as what we're already doing, and we would hope to continue to grow that as we grow our congregation.
Thank you. Ms. Ricky?
Thank you. And yes, I do know about all the individual service projects, and those are very nice. And I don't deny the mission of the SRUMC being very beautiful and worthy, and I just, I know that there are other properties, similar size, that are available that are not in the downtown corridor of the downtown plan, and I just wonder if you've looked at those potential properties? And I also just feel as if I need to stick to the downtown plan because it hasn't been adhered to very well in the past, and I just feel like I'm not representing the city very well if I don't adhere to that.
I'm going to defer any misstatements to Alder Person Linder or to the city planner or our architect, but I guess what I would say is that in two previous Plan Commission meetings and in a previous city council meeting, we were able to share that Sugar River attempted to make contact with the current property owners around. attempted to make contact with the current property owners around the old library that we currently inhabit. And we received no feedback positively to look to possibly purchase those plots, to put them together and look at that as an alternative. We also looked at an opportunity out on West Verona Ave, out towards the highway, past Fleet Farm. And that was unsuccessful. And I guess the best way to put it as far as this location being ideal for us and hopefully ideal for the city, is that when we're looking at the price and what we can afford as a growing but young congregation, anything that was vacant land and new build was two and a half to three times more expensive than what we could do in renovating and revitalizing a current space. So, I hope that answer is sufficient.
Thank you. Ms. Ricky?
I had also sent an email to the pastor about the feasibility of the church possibly paying part or all of the city portion of the taxes so that that tax base isn't completely lost forever. And as you would receive city services, just as everyone does. And so I wondered about the feasibility of that. And knowing that the potential tax base, if it were to eventually become some other sort of development, would be lost. So I wondered if you could speak to that.
I appreciate hearing those comments again. They were brought up at a previous city council meeting and previous Plan Commission meetings as well. So, the best answer I can provide you, based on the email that you sent as well as this interaction, Sugar River United Methodist Church was able to contact our state conference in regards to the tax implications. And our conference has basically advised us to not pay property taxes. This is something that I think could set a very challenging precedent for elected officials in this community. We're one of many nonprofits in your community, and there'd be implications beyond just our organization. One point I'd just like to make factually is that the current location, the current owner, Wildcat Lanes, is paying approximately sixty-five hundred to eighty-five hundred dollars per year. And I do understand the potential financial implications of what the overlay district or the downtown plan had for a mixed-use opportunity. I guess I would defer to the comments that Mr. Years just made about looking beyond the bottom line and how we'll continue to provide service that can't be counted in dollars and cents.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I'm supporting the motion, the project. I think one of the deciding factors for me is, well, two of the deciding factors. One, the church is good neighbors. I'm not a member of the church. But I think they do great work in the community, and I think they'll do great work at that location. I think we have to make a decision based on what's there now. And right now, we have a place that's falling apart, that's owned by the bank, that doesn't want to own it anymore. There have been, maybe not an overwhelming amount, but there have been incidences that have involved the police there. And I don't feel like that's gonna be an issue when the church moves in. And so it is very much a tough choice, because we do have the downtown plan. And we definitely all want to see good commercial development to diversify our tax base, provide restaurants and other things for people to do and whatnot. But we have to play the hand we're dealt. And right now, I think that of all the options that I see, the church is absolutely the best one. And I think when they do take over that side, I think it's gonna be good for the community, and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz? Ms. Doyle?
I would like to thank everyone who reached out and shared their thoughts and concerns about this project. I always really appreciate hearing from people and their feedback because I did have some initial reservations about this project, being its location in our downtown district, the potential lost tax revenue. And I know a lot of people really like having recreational activities right here in Verona, so they don't have to travel with their families to Fitchburg or Madison to go bowling. But at the same time, I agree with Alder Diaz's comments that right now, we have a dilapidated building that no one wants to continue to operate as a bowling alley. So I think if we have someone who is willing to come in and revitalize that area and really alongside with the fantastic things that this church community does for our broader community here in Verona, again, it speaks louder than dollars and cents. And we also have a bit of a quandary with the downtown. Developers will come to the downtown if we have more people there, and more people will come as more developers come. And I think a project like this that brings people into our downtown, especially on the weekends, who can utilize neighboring businesses, neighboring activities, is a positive thing overall for our community, and I will be supporting this project tonight.
Additional comments? Questions? Mr. Tuchet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll say my turn. This has been rather difficult for me. You know, I started out initially not in favor of this after the last council meeting, changing my mind. And then hearing from other Verona residents, mostly through email. You know, I think there is this perception that the city is deciding to get rid of the bowling alley. And I want to keep the bowling alley. But unfortunately, I do not think that if we... I do not believe if we decide not to approve this that it will stay a bowling alley. It's out of our control, out of our hands. And as much as I've used Wildcat Lanes on a rainy day, on a cold winter day, and really like having it in the city and what they offer, I don't think that is its future. I think that opportunity came, I think the bank had the opportunity to keep it that way, at least that's my understanding, but decided to hold out. So now, as was already said, we're left with this decision. Do we let a church move in? And I think it's a good decision for the city, and I think it's a good decision for Sugar Creek. Is it, in my mind, the best decision? Again, I'd still rather see it a bowling alley. But it's not, again, the option we're being presented with. And, you know, we're gonna miss... You know, it's interesting. I had breakfast in town last week. And, you know, it's like, where can we have breakfast in Verona? And we're losing a place. And I'd like to encourage anyone interested in bringing restaurants, places to eat, things to do, to Verona. The council's willing. And losing Wildcat is gonna hurt. But unfortunately, that is not the option I'm given right now. I will support this decision, but it hurts. It's hard. And it's slightly emotional for me because I'd much rather keep the business here in town, but I think this is a good decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuchet. Other questions? Comments? Ms. Ricky?
I just want to say that I will be the sole no vote, it appears. So, and I'm happy that it looks like it's going to pass. I'm not opposed to the church. The building is beautiful. The mission is beautiful, and I don't oppose the church. I just, I can't in good conscience make a yes vote on this because of the adherence to the downtown plan. And so I like, Pat Leidall on Plan Commission will be the sole no vote tonight. But I will congratulate you later as well.
Thank you, Ms. Ricky. Just my comments. I wholeheartedly support the efforts of the Sugar River United Methodist Church. I think this is one of a number of examples that we've had as a city where we've had an opportunity. I mean, if we're serious about development, and especially when we say that we're serious about the downtown development, we have to put our money where our mouth is. And this property's been for sale for a long time. It's been struggling as a bowling alley. So as a city, we had an opportunity to buy it, and we didn't do that. So I want us to remember that as we move forward, that if we are serious about changing our downtown and getting development in the downtown, we have to put our money where our mouth is. If we own it, then we can control what happens. And we can sell it to whoever we want to sell it to. But unless we do that, we're sort of at the mercy of those that are interested in purchasing the property. And everything that I've seen from the efforts of the Sugar River United Methodist Church is that they are going to dramatically enhance that property. So I look forward to them being there. But for those of us that have reservations, I think we have to keep in mind, when those opportunities come up, when there's a piece of property, if we really want to control, and if we're serious about saying that we want to improve the downtown, then we have to do something about it. We can't just say that we're going to do it. So I'm not criticizing anyone here, but I want to keep that as a reminder as we move forward and other properties do become available in the city. So we are, as a city, we are not pushing the bowling alley out of business. As Mr. Tuchet said, absent of our decision this evening, the bowling alley is not gonna continue, or more than likely is not going to continue. So those are my comments, and I wish the Sugar River United Methodist Church the best as you move forward. Other comments? Questions from the council? Mr. Diaz?
I just have one further comment to echo what Alder Tuchet and the mayor said. I just, yeah, I want to agree. The city's not pushing the bowling alley out. And frankly, I mean, from some of the emails I've gotten, it's clear that there are a lot of people in the community in Verona beyond who have very fond memories of the bowling alley and who wanted to stay. But the bank owns it now, and it's rather clear that they don't care about it in the same way that people in the community do. And I think compared to potential alternatives, the church is gonna be a good choice.
Thank you. Mr. Years?
You know, from some of the conversation tonight and talking about the downtown plan, I get the sense that some feel that a church would detract from us creating a downtown, and I feel almost the opposite. I think bringing a church to that area, kind of echo what Ms. Doyle was speaking about earlier. I think that that brings traffic there. And it shows that, you know, the city's willing to let people come in and make that area stronger. And so I'm a big proponent and fought hard for the downtown plan. And although this may be against it through the letter, in the spirit, I don't think it is at all. I think it strengthens it a great deal. And so I think we're still on that trajectory to create and strengthen our downtown, even with Sugar River moving into this area.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? If not, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-014-027, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor institutional land use to be located at 415 West Verona Avenue. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we'll let the minutes reflect that. Ms. Ricky voted no. We wish you the best as you move forward. We are still on the Plan Commission. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mayor. The next item, I would like to hold back a motion, but I'd like to bring up discussion of Resolution R-014-028, approving a conditional use permit to allow a group development in apartment land use to be located on Lot Number Two of the Scenic Ridge Platte. I'd just like to hold back the motion until we talk about the traffic road situation that was brought up earlier.
Mr. Sayer and Mr. Gunlock, do you want to address some of the concerns that were brought up during the public comment portion?
I can address the traffic. Like I said, that the Plan Commission meeting, this sixty-two unit apartment complex will generate approximately four hundred vehicle trips a day. The peak hour would be the hour in the morning or the hour in the evening when the most traffic is entering and leaving that development. Figures out to approximately forty to forty-five trips in that hour, which is one trip per minute. Granted, they may bunch up, but the average would be one trip per minute that comes out onto Acre Drive and up West Chapel Royal to Locust Drive. The streets in Verona are thirty-six feet face to face. They're designed to handle in excess of two thousand vehicle trips a day. This additional traffic on Acre Drive, West Chapel Royal, I don't see where it's going to be a huge problem. Granted, there is a bus stop on the corner. May have to move the bus stop to the west, one block. The other thing is, the subdivision is being completed this summer. The traffic, all the traffic on the southern portion of this subdivision can leave the subdivision by Whispering Pines. The traffic in the middle of the subdivision can leave the subdivision by Scenic Ridge to Locust Drive. And the northern third of the subdivision would go out West Chapel Royal to Locust Drive. So taking the whole subdivision and splitting it up, we end up with a third of the traffic going out West Chapel Royal, a third going out Scenic Ridge, and a third coming in at Whispering Pines. I'm not sure how many lots are in the total subdivision, but a single... These apartment buildings will generate, the studios will generate around four trips per day. The two-bedroom will generate around eight vehicle trips per day. The average single-family home generates from eight to ten vehicle trips per day. So, ten single-family homes in this subdivision is generating as much traffic... Or forty, forty single-family homes in this subdivision is generating as much traffic as these sixty-two apartment units. There was a suggestion that a driveway be brought off of Locust Drive and into the apartment complex. Off of Locust Drive, down to the apartment complex, there's approximately thirty feet of vertical difference in elevation. That driveway, if we did that, would be very steep. In the wintertime, it would be very difficult to get in and out of that driveway. I'm also concerned that emergency vehicles, particularly fire trucks, could not negotiate that driveway in the wintertime. Another item is that the plat for Scenic Ridge has a vehicle restriction all the way from the bridge south to Chapel Royal Drive. There is no access allowed to any of those lots along Locust Drive, off of Locust Drive. It all comes in off of either Chapel Royal, Scenic Ridge, or Whispering Pines. Granted, I know there is a concern that the traffic is gonna be unbearable. But again, peak hour, it would be about forty-five trips. And the rest of the traffic is spread over a sixteen, generally a sixteen-hour period, say from six o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock at night. Then through the night, there will be a few trips coming and going. But again, our streets are designed to handle this kind of traffic.
Mr. Gunlock, would you also speak to the issue of the bridge being shut down for twelve weeks and when that could be reconstructed?
Right now, we're proceeding with a design proposal to widen the bridge. We would try to get the design work done either late this fall or this winter. If the council so chooses, then the bridge could be reconstructed probably summer, early fall of next year, or wait till 2016. Whispering Pines will be constructed through Cathedral Point this year. Whispering Pines will be constructed through Cathedral Point this year to make our connection, as will Locust Drive be reconstructed all the way south to the city limits. So, if you come out of Scenic Ridge, you'll be able to take, go south on Locust Drive to Whispering Pines, and go all the way across to Range Trail, and then up Range Trail to County Truck Highway M. Granted, it's going to be inconvenient for the 10 to 12 weeks that the bridge is being widened, but we can't allow traffic on that bridge during the time it's under construction.
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock. Mr. Sayer, any follow-up that you wanted to have?
You know, to be honest, I came in about 10 minutes late, so if I missed any questions that were raised before I got here, if you could just let me know, I can answer those.
Okay. Mr. Burns?
A couple of the questions that came up, one was for the future multifamily building that's planned on the adjacent lot. How could the city ensure that that's a high-quality development with high-quality materials? And then I think there was just a question about the zoning and what is approved out there, and what's allowed by the zoning requirement in this area. There was also a question about the, since there is not a neighborhood association, that the architectural review was conducted by the developer, and I think a clarification of what is reviewed by the Plan Commission versus that, what that Architectural Review Committee or Neighborhood Association would look at.
Mr. Sayer?
Sure. So, starting with the Lot One, actually of Scenic Ridge, so Lot Two is the one right here on the screen. We have a stormwater pond, and then we would have Lot One that would be kind of off the screen here, kind of under those power lines that are out there right now. Both Lot Two, this one here, and Lot One to the west are, were planned and zoned as multifamily. They both are zoned urban residential. So, the question about the, how do we ensure high-quality standards in use of materials? Our ordinance actually requires that. We amended our ordinance a couple, two, three years ago, and one of the requirements in that ordinance was to, for the use of high-quality materials. That's probably the reason why, when you look at the elevations on this drawing, you see brick and you see hardy plank siding. The ordinance requires that. So, if and when that project comes in for Lot One, the same requirement will be in place. High-quality materials, most likely brick, most likely hardy plank siding of some type. The example I've pointed to already is the Sciana Ridge Apartments up on County Highway M, North Main Street there. The materials in this, for this project before you tonight, is very similar, if not better, to what that project is. When I first met with the developer, I actually told them, that's the project you need to look at from a material standpoint, and then here's the ordinance, you need to make the project as good as or better than that project, and I believe they have. Regarding the association and that review process, the city doesn't get involved with a covenants or associations of that nature. It's our policy that we just, we don't involve ourselves with that. So, I, to be honest, I'm not familiar with that, because we don't enforce those for any projects. A lot of times, questions come about covenants. We don't enforce covenants. Those are enforced by the association. So, that question I cannot answer. The only way I can answer that question is by saying that we do not enforce those. I think I'm missing one more question that was out there.
Go ahead, Ms. Burns.
I think just a clarification of the zoning district, and what that zoning district allows.
So, the zoning district is the urban residential for both Lot One and Lot Two of Scenic Ridge. So, once again, this is Lot Two. Lot One is to the west of here. Both those lots, as I said, are zoned. You are, both those lots were planned as multifamily when this was plotted in 2006, 2007. That does allow up to 12 dwelling units per acre. I believe this lot is five-point-some acres. Pretty much the 62 units is the maximum that is allowed by ordinance. In my initial conversations with the developer, this lot, and Lot Two and Lot One are exempt from our multifamily phasing policy. The exemption was put in place when we passed that policy a couple of years ago. So, in my conversations with the developer was that, in order to stay within that exemption, they had to meet every zoning requirement that we have in place. I believe they've done that. Beyond the group development of having two buildings on one lot, they have met every zoning requirement, every setback, every landscaping requirement. From a density standpoint, every requirement has been met, mostly because they wanted to stay under the phasing policy that we have in place, but, so from a zoning standpoint, it conforms to every requirement we have, with the exception of the group development that we, in the past, have always said that isn't really a zoning requirement, it's just an option of how to build something a little differently.
Mr. Linder?
Two more items, Mr. Sayer. One, I think somebody asked about having a onsite leasing agent. If it was only 62 units, that wouldn't make sense for them, but with the third building coming in, perhaps, they would get to 100, and that's what their break-even point would be. And then the second thing I was wondering about is, correct me if I'm wrong, but they could have, this Lot Two, they could have had one 62-unit building, they didn't have to have two buildings. Is that correct?
The first question of the onsite leasing facility, this, these two buildings, it will have a exercise facility, a community room, more of a common space that people can rent out for family events. And then we'll also have a leasing office, and we'll also, in addition, we'll have an outdoor pool. So, we'll have a variety of amenities to it. So, there will be a leasing office in this facility. I'm not sure what, how this parcel will impact Lot One. I haven't seen any plans for Lot One, but I know the 62 units for this site will have a leasing facility onsite. Regarding the...
Two buildings or one building?
Yes, I'm sorry. Two buildings on one site, and it's been a long day for me. By ordinance, yes, they could do one building on the property. The group development allows that process with the conditional use permit, but they could have came in with one building. I encouraged at least breaking up the buildings, which they've done. From a height standpoint, that was part of the more critical feature, it does conform to the height requirements of 35 feet. They've done that through the use of a variety of retaining walls on the property scattered throughout, in order to level the site and make it work from a height standpoint. But yes, they could have came in with one building.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, as I listened to the residents of Scenic Ridge, it brought me back to my first term on council, when Harmony Hills was, brought the same challenge. Their issue was, the density was even higher than this, and I voted against it at the time. I listened to the neighbors, I had equal concerns. Following year in 2013, I asked the president of the homeowners' association how it was going. Apartment building was finished, they had big-time traffic concerns, similar safety concerns, and he was very surprised at how well it went. Now, admittedly, this is a different developer, different builder, or possibly different builder, but, you know, I was happy to hear how happy they were about it. There's still quite a few residents, I think, would still rather not have the apartments, and I agree with them in general, but I think it's hard, when you've built your home, you're used to looking at your landscape, and then it's going to change. I'm very sympathetic to that. But I think, over the last few years, we've tried very hard to encourage developers, sellers, to communicate what's going on in these open lots, and as was said in 2006, 2007, that's when the zoning was set, and from a city's perspective, our hands are tied. If they meet all the requirements, they can essentially build. So, really, it's, I think we need to take a difficult situation and make it as best as we can. I am encouraged that this can be onsite management. I think that shows that this owner wants to maintain the property, keep it nice, because to me, in the long run, that's the real concern, because it seems like upfront, you get high-quality development, high-quality tenants, people want to take care of the place, keep it nice, but in the long run is when we get nervous about somebody not caring. I think they've got a lot of amenities here that put into place someone that cares, and it's going to want to, they're going to want to keep it that way. So, as much as I am sympathetic to the owners, I also have to think about what, again, kind of like the last item we voted on, what's the right, you know, we have to take what we have and make the best with it. So, I just wanted to point that out, remind people that, you know, unfortunately, Mr. Alder Steiner and Alder McIlvery aren't here, they were with me on the council at the time, and actually, I'm sure Jack was on Plan and Commission at the time. It was hard, and, you know, like Sugar Creek had filled the City Hall, they had filled City Hall, all the neighbors at the time, and it was not an easy decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. You know, I too want to thank all those who came out and spoke tonight, and, you know, I especially want to thank Brian, and I didn't catch his last name.
Rizzo.
Rizzo. I have a lot of respect for what he had to say tonight, and especially when he was saying that he wanted people who wanted to be able to live in his neighborhood should be able to live in his neighborhood. I think that's profound. And these apartments, they are high-end. You know, $1,400 for a two-bedroom apartment, you know, that's more than my mortgage. So, I would consider that high-end, and we have a lot of families, young families, who want to be in our school district, and I don't think, as in the same vein as Brian, I don't think we should tell them, no, you can't, and we should have opportunities for them to be here. Also, kind of building off of what Mr. Touche had said with Harmony Hills, we've had one complaint, to my knowledge, that I heard of, and our police department took care of it right away, and it was actually with children and parking, and we were able to get Yellow Curb out there almost immediately, so that we could take away a blind corner, where kids are now more safe in that residential development. And I have every bit of trust in our police department that they will do the same here. You know, our police chief, he drives around personally to check to see where stop signs need to be, where other safety measures need to take place, and I have a good working relationship with him, and like I said, I have the utmost trust in his ability. So, with that said, I'll be supporting this development.
Thank you, Ms. Yours. Mr. Touche?
You know, I think one of the questions that came up was a possibility of an alternate entrance. I don't think that was addressed by Mr. Sayer, but I just wanted to...
Mr. Gunlock did speak to them.
Yes, there is no access allowed off of Locust Drive to this parcel. It's plat restricted.
And it would be the same thing on the other side from the Cathedral Point as well. Mr. Touche and Mr. Yours talked a little bit about traffic. At the neighborhood meeting the other night, there were two things that I heard, and one is about people speeding and people not stopping for stop signs, rolling stops, and that's an enforcement issue that certainly we can have the police department take. On Locust Drive, and Dale, I would ask, you know, public safety, take a look at that. There's a hill going both ways, going up, you know, from Scenic Ridge and going down towards Highway 69, and people do speed there. That is an issue, and there's a lot of bikers on that, bicyclists, I should say, on that piece as well. The second thing that came up, or another point that came up the other evening, was the parking, and I think we had an example of that the other night, or for a few days, with parking by Prairie Heights Drive, because there was some repaving that was being done at that site, so all the residents were parking on the street. So, when you went up and down Prairie Heights, both sides, there were a lot of vehicles parked there. That's not common, that's not an everyday practice, but Baba was wondering if maybe you could speak to the issue, if parking were a concern on Acre Lane? How would the city address that in the future? Mr. Gunlock?
If parking is on Acre Lane, if you go, if you go to the west, that whole parcel, or that to the west is the detention basins, there's a large area there that would not front any other single-family residents across the road. So, that would be a place for parking, coming out of this, if there was an overflow of parking from the apartments. They could park to the west on the northerly side, northeasterly side of Acre Lane. They would not infringe on parking in front of the additional single-family residents on the southwest side of Acre Lane. There really isn't, there really isn't that much room in front of the parcel itself to put additional, to park additional vehicles out there. At most, between the two driveways, you might get three vehicles.
And the other comment, you didn't say it, but I know, Mr. Sayer has mentioned it many times, when we took a look at the parking requirements for the site, both above-ground and underground, it meets the requirements. Mr. Sayer, did you want to speak to that issue at all?
Sure. Yes, it does meet the requirements. 137 stalls are required by ordinance. They have 68 stalls underground and 72 surface stalls, so it conforms to what the ordinance requires. And the ordinance requires, it's based upon the unit type as well, so that's how it's actually calculated. It's not just on a unit basis, but it's the specific unit is actually looked at in each situation.
Thank you. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock. I just, I was not aware that the restriction of the access point off Locust Drive, and I knew there was a topography situation there, but sometimes at the Plan Commission, we do our best to vet everything, but that's one question we did not ask the Plan Commission. I was encouraged to hear you say that there are going to be some alternate ways out of the neighborhoods, so there might be less traffic because of that over time. So, I'd like, this time, I'd like to make a motion approving Resolution R-014-028, approving a conditional use permit to allow a group development and apartment land use to be located on Lot Number Two of the Scenic Ridge Platte.
We do have a motion. I'll look for a second. I know that we've had some hands up. I know Mr. Diaz wants to speak. We do have a motion. Is there a second?
Can we continue comments after a second?
If we have a motion on the floor, so without a second, that motion would die due to the lack of a second. Discussion can continue, yes.
Then I'll go ahead and second the motion.
Okay. We have a second by Ms. Doyle. We are open for discussion. Mr. Diaz, sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for staff. Would it be possible, as part of the conditional use permit, to require onsite management? I know the developer intends to do it anyway, but then why can't we require it?
Mr. Sayer?
I suppose you could. I mean, I'm not aware of any situations in my past experiences where it's been required. You know, it's, I don't know if Bill has any thoughts on that, but I'm not aware of any of my experiences of seeing that before.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah, I was just, my initial thought is that, since we don't have anything in our ordinance that would refer to that as a requirement, and this project has complied with the requirements in the ordinance, I think it would be difficult to enforce that. I think we can certainly work to encourage that, but I don't know if we can go so far as to make it an absolute mandate.
Further questions, Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, this is a question for the developer. I'm looking at the map that's up right now. Would it be possible to thicken the tree screen around Lots Seven and Eight?
The developer is here. He can answer if he desires to do so.
Well, we did...
Brian, please come to the podium if you would.
Sorry.
Well, it's more for the benefit of those watching at home, so.
I'm Brian McKee, I'm the developer of the Scenic Ridge neighborhood. We did take and address some comments from the initial Plan Commission meeting that requested some additional plannings along Lots Three through Eight. There is added buffer. We met, the city points requirement, I think, required us to have 2,100 points roughly, or 2,080 points. We have over 4,000 because of the added plannings that we added along the residential homes along that side. We did actually add a topography berm as well along there to try to help block the parking in the buildings from those single-family homes.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
I just had one further comment. I'm not placing blame on anyone, but I feel like lately, we've had too many city council meetings where neighbors are surprised with what's happening with their neighborhood, and I know, like, there's covenants, and there's plans on paper, but a lot of the stuff doesn't really matter till someone's going to do something with it, and I know that notices went out in accordance with our ordinance, but I'm starting to think that our ordinance for notification isn't good enough for how we notify people about projects in their neighborhood, and I would hope that going forward, we can do a better job of getting neighbors and other people involved early, because I don't really like it when people tell me that they had to discover what was happening, you know, like, two doors, or, you know, a couple of streets over from the Verona Press, and the Verona Press does do a very good job, but I think the city, it's on the city to do better in the... And the Warner Press does do a very good job, but I think the city, it's on the city to do better in the future.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone again for coming out tonight and really appreciate people coming and commenting on this. You know, a home is one of the largest investments most people make in their lifetime, and I truly sympathize with wanting to retain that value and also appreciate the safety concerns. As a parent who lives off of Main Street and Military Ridge and often is out there playing with my daughter, you know, that's probably one of the highest-volume streets in our city. So, I definitely appreciate people's concerns and juggling bicycles and things like that. It can be difficult at times. But I feel that Mr. Gunlock has addressed traffic concerns to an extent. And I also feel that we do need to offer different options. And with this development here, I think that we've really worked to find what would work and fit within the residential neighborhood. I did want to address, I know it was briefly commented on in tonight's public comment, something that I believe came up from Commissioner Manley at the plan commission, was that we should look in the future at how we structure single-family residential development in its relation to multifamily development. I would just caution that that might be a difficult road to go down just in, a lot of people have concerns with multifamily, with differential incomes and things like that. The more we do to segregate multifamily from single-family, it becomes a bit of a self-fulfilling prophecy because those negatives usually associated with multifamily, if we start to segregate those developments too far away from different price points, that's when you exacerbate that problem. So, I would caution, I don't want to speak to Commissioner Manley's intent, but I think that that could be a dangerous road to go down.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. Ms. Ricky?
I just wondered if Mr. Gunlock could maybe expand on the idea he brought up of moving the bus stop a block over. Could that be put in as sort of a contingency or an addendum to make sure that that happens for the safety of the kids?
Mr. Gunlock?
I think you may have to talk to the bus company to see if they're willing to do that. I don't know what the bus route is through that neighborhood. If they just come in and turn around there, do a Y-turn, or do a turn, or if they go around the block. I mean, if they're going around the block to move it one block west, just three hundred feet, would get the traffic off of that corner. It would also, I don't like the idea that people are parking there in the evening when their children are coming home and crowding that area. It would be better if they were to the west and farther into the neighborhood than right here at the entrance.
Ms. Ricky?
Thank you. Yeah, and I just, additional things, I don't know if it can be somehow put in writing now, but, you know, the yellow curbs that Mr. Years mentioned, and maybe crosswalks at those locations and bright signs to draw attention to them, at least at first, when people are kind of learning the new rules and when there is more higher traffic volume. If that could be just added in writing at this point so that people are more comfortable with that.
Mr. Gunlock? Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
If I may, I was just going to suggest that rather than try to decide where is the best place to put anything specific at this point, I think it's a conversation we'd want to get our police chief and probably the school district involved in, and just go out there, take a look at that site, and collectively decide what's the best way to put in those type of measures.
Mr. Years?
And also to that point, I just kind of wanted to alert the public that the Public Safety Committee, you know, I'm working directly with the police chief right now at ways to strengthen our crosswalks and our pedestrian crossings throughout the city. So, that, I agree with city staff that we need to wait to kind of see where things fall out and fall into place. But some of those other more safety measures are already in the works, and we hope to be bringing some of those out to the public here pretty soon.
Thank you, Mr. Years. And certainly, public safety is a concern of all of us on the council and the city staff, and we don't take that lightly. And assure all the people in the audience that the subdivision will be treated just like any other subdivision. And we aren't requiring in, you know, in writing in any of those other subdivisions, but public safety is of utmost importance to us. Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just want to say, to echo some of the things that Alder Touche said earlier, that this basically does conform to the way the city plan is laid out. And so, I feel like I have to vote in favor of it, even if it's not necessarily my first choice. I do appreciate the high-quality materials which are required, but not trying to cheat, not that the developer would, but, you know, some, certain developers maybe weren't in this room to try to cheat their way out of city requirements. I like the underground parking. I know how expensive it is. But I think that looks way better than staring at a sea of parking lots. I do really appreciate the onsite management. I think that is actually one of the keys to maintaining the quality of an apartment long-term. I don't worry about the first year or two for an apartment. I worry about afterwards when people start trying to cut corners. And I think onsite management is one of the best things that you can do to prevent it. I share concerns about traffic. I would be extremely nervous about four hundred traffic trips in my neighborhood. The street I live on is very quiet, and I'm still, my son's a toddler. He doesn't understand cars. And so, it makes me very nervous. So, please keep coming to the city, to myself, to Alder Steiner, to the mayor, to anyone really. And we'll make sure that, we'll make sure to bug the appropriate city staff to make sure your concerns are addressed. And like I said, I want the city to do better with keeping all of you in the loop as the project goes forward.
Thank you. Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I have one last question. Does, it's hard for me to tell. Does a drawing include a sidewalk along Locust Drive? Is that, and then is that put in by the developer or the city?
Sidewalk is already in along Locust Drive.
I never noticed it. Thank you.
There's a sidewalk on the west side, and there's a wider path for bicycles on the east side. Further questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-014-028. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for being here this evening, and we will do best to make sure all your concerns are heard and addressed. Thank you. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mayor. I make a motion to approve Ordinance 14-844, approving a zoning map amendment at 1979 Milky Way to rezone property from the current rural or agricultural zoning to propose suburban industrial zoning district.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Years. Mr. Linder?
I believe Mr. Sayer is going to talk about this.
Andy, if you could turn the map, the screen on for me, please?
Epic is requesting to rezone forty acres and then a small piece of property for their new contractor annex building. So, the request tonight is to rezone this forty here, and then a small portion of the property in this area, which would accommodate the contractor annex building. Plan commissioner reviewed it a week ago and recommended approval of the zoning map amendment on a six-zero vote.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions or comments? Mr. Diaz?
Let the record state that I'll be abstaining from this in the next vote.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of approval of Ordinance 14-844, approving a zoning map amendment at 1979 Milky Way? Signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. That motion carries, and we will let the minutes reflect that Mr. Diaz abstained in the vote. Mr. Linder?
Before I get too far in this, do I need to read the amendments in at this time? Okay. All right. So, then I make a motion to approve Resolution R-014-029, approving a conditional use permit to allow group development for contractor annex building at Epic Systems Corporation with the following conditions. One, the type, capacity, location, and layout of a private wastewater disposal system shall comply with all requirements of the state of Wisconsin and Dane County. Two, the owner shall operate and maintain the private disposal facility in a sanitary manner at all times and at no expense to the city. And three, at such time as public sewer becomes available to serve the building, the building shall be connected to the sanitary sewer within ninety days of the private wastewater disposal system shall be, and the private wastewater disposal system shall be abandoned as required by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Years. Questions, comments? Mr. Sayer?
Once again, Epic is requesting a conditional use permit to amend their group development. What a group development is, is any project that has multiple buildings in a parcel or is part of an overall plan. The proposed contractor building would be located approximately in this area for reference purposes. This is the future Campus Four. This is the existing solar field. Contractor annex building would look like a barn. So, the plan commission did hold a required public hearing on this. One I am to point out, this would be served by municipal water but would have its own private septic systems. That's the purpose of the three conditions that the plan commission recommended approval. The challenge with this parcel is it is not located within the city's urban service area, and it's also currently located a considerable distance from the nearest sanitary main. So, with that, the plan commission did record approval five to one of the conditional use permit amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions, comments? No questions, no comments. We have a motion and a second before us to approve Resolution R-014-029, approving a conditional use permit to allow for a group development for contractor annex building in Epic Systems Corporation.
Can I make the comment?
I'm sorry. Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I just, I was at the planning commission meeting. I just want to make sure everyone else who maybe wasn't there. If I remember this correctly, they're going to be putting in a septic system for this. Is that right? And with the hope that we will, in the future, get this incorporated into an urban service area agreement so that we can tie them into Madison sewers. I just, so we are doing an exception here that we don't normally do. The only other place that I'm aware of in the city that has this is Redden Park. So, I just want to make that aware of council.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Mr. Years?
And I just want, you know, I'm comfortable with that and with that understanding that it will be connected to services at some point.
That's the intention, yes. Ms. Doyle?
Just to expand upon your comments, Alder Touche, I was also at the plan commission meeting, and I believe one of the commissioners asked if it was possible to locate this within urban service area. The problem with that is Epic is looking to expand in the areas currently covered. So, the idea is long-term. They will expand with more office buildings and structures within that area, and then would have to subsequently move this if it was located within the USA. So, this is to just avoid having to move this, and I have confidence that this will become a part of our regular sewer system.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Seeing none? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Mr. Diaz? Abstaining from this motion as well. Let the minutes reflect that Mr. Diaz abstained from the vote. Thank you. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to approve Resolution R-014-030, approving a general development plan for the Hometown Grove Development located at 845 Kimball Lane.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second? Second? A second by, I think, Ms. Ricky, I heard. Ms. Ricky, second it. Mr. Linder?
I believe Mr. Sayer is going to...
Okay, Mr. Sayer?
Requested is a general development plan. This is part of a planned unit development. Planning development is a four-step process. You have a conceptual review, then you have a general development plan, then at the end, you have a precise implementation plan. Due to the fact this is a single-family project, the single-family homes would not have PIPs, precise implementation plans, attached to them. So, this would be the last step in the process. This is the project that's been before the council and plan commission a few times now. Conceptually, it was before the council in January. You also saw the plan for this project in April of this year. What the developer is proposing to do is to construct, or to plat thirty-five single-family lots and twenty-zero lot-line lots. An existing townhouse is currently located in this area as part of this project. The developer would pick up that townhouse and relocate it to Lots Forty-Eight through Fifty-One, and then in the future, would construct another four-unit townhouse building on Lots Fifty-Two to Fifty-Five. The single-family portion of this project, Lots One through Fifteen, would have front-loaded garages, and Lots Sixteen through Thirty-Five would have alley-loaded garages. Those alley-loaded lots, the alleyways would be privately maintained and owned by the homeowners association. The homeowners association would also privately own and maintain the park in the project and also the green space area along here. One item to point out that at your chairs tonight and not on the slide, the developer has updated the landscaping, tree plantings in this area. They are proposing additional plantings here. One of the conditions recommended by the plan commission on the actual plat, not on the planned unit development, was for a fence to be installed in this area. I know the applicant, the developer, has spoken with the president of the condo association, and I think their general direction is looking more at landscaping versus fencing material. I think the condo association has also offered to have those plantings put on their property as well if they won't fit on this project site. In addition, the developer would be installing a swale. A swale would be constructed between the backside of Lots Fourteen and Fifteen. This would help direct the water that is currently draining onto the condo property. It would direct it out to Schubert Street, then ultimately into the stormwater pond to the northeast here. The plan commission did hold a required public hearing, and they recommended four to three, the approval of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Mr. Linder?
Just a little more background on that. For the fencing, that'll come up in item number eight, as far as the exact fencing. The other, the second thing was, it was a four-to-three vote on all three of these. The general feeling, some of the feeling was that the lots were too small. That was a particular one. One plan commission member just said they were too small. They wanted to stick to the six-thousand lot size. If I remember correctly, there was more than one that commented on that.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Mr. Years?
Yes, I just kind of wanted to touch base with something Mr. Sayer was talking about in relationship to the condo association. I did speak with the developer before the meeting, and he indicated that he would be willing to extend plants so that it kind of went around the entirety down along Lots Twenty-Five and Twenty-four, or, I'm sorry, Fifteen and Fourteen. I'm sorry, I had trouble reading the map there. To kind of provide a little bit more privacy to both the new homeowners in the new subdivision, but also to those condo owners. And I want to thank him for being willing to work with the condo association and getting that put into place. And that I did speak with someone from the condo association, and they would really like to see more plants, shrubs, or something of that nature rather than a structured fence. So, once again, I want to thank the developer for willing to work with the condo association and adding in that little bit of extra privacy. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Other questions, comments? Ms. Doyle?
I would like to echo Alder Years' comments about the developer's willingness to work with the condo association and condo residents on extending that kind of natural boundary just for privacy reasons and to help just work with the existing residents. And then I know this was addressed at the plan commission. Mr. Gunlock, I don't know if you want to speak more about the swales, and if you think that all that with the roadways will adequately address the drainage issues, because I know those were the two major concerns brought up by condo residents.
Mr. Gunlock?
If they swale along Lot Fourteen and Fifteen and direct it out towards the street, that should alleviate the majority of the problem of the water coming off of the hill to the north and draining onto the condo association.
Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. About the swale, you know, as, my concern is, swale gets put in, years go by, someone decides to fill it in. Where's the swale going to go? Or where do you suggest the swale going?
Mr. Gunlock?
The swale, I mean, the swale has to come out, has to come out to the street. I really don't want to see us trying to put a storm sewer back there on an easement that the city has to maintain in the future. There just isn't room in there to get adequate easement in there to put in a storm sewer. There just isn't room in there to get adequate easement in there to put in a storm sewer. And, I mean, I have a swale in my, in the backyard of my house. That drains, that drains all the way down the block. Nobody has filled it in. Several of the homes were built in there behind me prior to them even installing the swale. The village came in, had the developer install the swale after several of those homes were there. It's there now. Nobody has tried to fill it in. I mean, it's, it's there. I suppose on the Platte you could put an easement, a 10-foot easement for the swale that says for drainage purposes, but if the developer grades this, puts a swale in, the time it'll get filled in is when they build on those two lots. The develop, our, our building inspector is going to have to make sure that when they grade those lots, the swale is there after, after the construction is done.
Is, is it inappropriate for us to ask for a swale easement? For lack of a better term?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it really only has to be 10 feet wide. There's already, I believe there's already a six-foot utility easement along there, so if it was four feet wider, just to get the swale in, then it's there.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Ricky?
Just wondering if it would be helpful or detrimental to consider putting a rain garden in, in the swale to just help with water staying in Verona, going down to Verona's aquifer instead of out of the city?
Mr. Gunlock?
I do not believe that the Public Works Department would, would want a rain garden back there that they'd have to maintain. If you put a rain garden in, it would have to be maintained by the property owner, and the property owner may not want to maintain a rain garden.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none. The motion that is before us is to approve Resolution R-014-030 approving a general development plan for the hometown Grove Development located at 845 Kimball Lane. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
The motion carries, and Mr. Touche votes no. Mr. Linder, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve ordinance 14845 approving, approving a zoning map amendment to rezone lots 1 through 35 of the future hometown Grove Platte located at 845 Kimball Lane from their current zoning classification of urban residential to community residential.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle? Mr. Linder or Mr. Sayer?
Do you have anything to add?
Yeah, once, once again, right now this whole entire parcel is zoned urban residential, which is the city's multifamily zoning district. As part of this process, staff has recommended that they rezone lots 1 through 35 to the community residential district. It's the closest match to the kind of project they're looking at. The Plan Commission did hold the required public hearing and recommended approval on a, on a four to three vote.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Mr. Linder?
And that four to three vote was pretty much same reasons for all, for all three of these Kimball Lane items here for, they wanted the bigger lots.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Mr. Touche?
I have to agree with those three commissioners that voted against this. I don't, as I stated in public comments before, it's, I don't think this is the right development for our city. I think we're trying to solve a developer problem and not a city problem.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Ms. Doyle?
I, I think that people welcome the style of development here in Verona. I actually was, stopped a couple times on the street for people saying that they appreciated an option of this nature so that, this was actually from a resident who was looking to downsize, who thought that this was a great option for them to continue to live in Verona but have a lot that required a bit less maintenance than their, their current residence. So I, I do think that this is something that people in Verona want, and that, that's, that's why I'm supporting it.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say I also support this project just because I think it adds a variety to our housing stock. I think, I think it's going to fill up really, really fast. I'd be willing to bet money on it, but that seems unethical. And I recognize it's a tricky, it's a tricky parcel, and it's, to me, it's coming down to choices, do we want to develop it or not? And, and I think we'd rather develop it, and I'm, I'm heartened by the, the way the developer's been willing to work with the neighbors and the condos and stuff and to kind of just try to make it work out, because I think, I think it has an opportunity to be a really excellent community.
Thank you. Mr. Years?
I kind of wanted to echo some of that same sentiment. This type of development, you know, it's not my favorite, and I, I've made those feelings known, but at the same time, I think this is, this is a difficult parcel, and I think we've done a good job at trying to figure out, you know, how can we use this parcel but at the same time get at part of our city's problems in that, you know, we do need housing for a wide variety of people. You know, I mentioned earlier in terms of the apartments that, you know, we need housing for people who are in that stage of their life. Ms. Doyle mentioned how there are some people in the city who are looking to down, downsize, so we need options for people who are in that stage of their life, just as we need the larger homes for people who have larger families and in that stage. So again, we had a tough, a tough parcel, and I think we're going to add, we're going to solve that problem while also adding to our housing stock, which has also been dwindling over the recent years, which is something we've mentioned in this room a number of times that we've kind of have been short of numbers of lots for people to build on, and, and this is one solution to that problem as well.
Thank you, Ms. Years. Ms. Ricky?
I would just echo some of the same positive sentiments that other Alders have already said, but I'm not going to actually say them again. But I also just am hopeful that once a homeowners' association is established, that they might potentially decide to have some sort of lawn care service, private company or whatever, take care of everybody's yard, so that those people who want to downsize because they aren't capable, physically able perhaps, to take care of, of a yard and a big house anymore can, can take advantage of that neighborhood, so.
Thank you.
Throw that out there again.
Other questions, other comments? Seeing none. The motion that is before us is approval of ordinance 14-845 approving a zoning map amendment to rezone lots 1 through 35 of the future hometown Grove Platte located at 845 Kimball Lane from the current zoning classification of urban residential to community residential. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
That motion carries, and Mr. Touche votes no. Mr. Linder, next item?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve Resolution R-014-031 approving a final Platte for hometown Grove to create 35 single-family lots, 20 zero lot-line lots, and four outlots with the following conditions. Number one, prior to the issuance of building permits, the developer shall enter into developer's agreement with the city. Number two, a swale shall be approved by the city engineer constructed by the developer on the rear property line of lots 14 and 15 to direct runoff away from the condominiums located on Cheshire Castle Way. And the third condition is presented in the packet, I, is developer shall construct a fence between the condominiums located on Cheshire Castle Way and Lot 4 to serve, to screen the area. I'd like to amend that one to make it be a little more specific and say the developer shall construct a vegetated fence between the condominiums and hometown Grove Development from the middle of the Lot 4 to the tip of Lot 14.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Mr. Linder, anything to add? Mr. Linder?
Maybe Adam might be able to add a little bit, but basically for the fencing, the condo association and the developer talked about this, and I believe they both agreed to make that change to the fencing. And I, I think it's a good addition because it'll keep a, a nice screen to the back of the condos and potentially from the sides of the, the houses. So, Mr. Sayer has anything to add?
Mr. Sayer?
My understanding from the conversation was, was looking at this area, so I'll defer the rest of the area. I know the developer's here tonight, and I'll have him address the rest of that landscaping.
Chuck Buehl, representing Apex Building Repair and, and the Apex Group Nine, and the owner of the, I think the best thing probably to do is just ask the president, Mr. Linder, to come up and, and just, maybe he can help me just explain what it was so that we can go on record and say we both agree. So, I want you to get up here with me.
Bob Lindauer, I live at 854 Cheshire Castle Way. And what our discussion was, was that at the Planning Commission, that they had talked about putting a small structural fence that would come right up where that new road would be that would deflect any light, headlights that would shine in our residents' condos. And after thinking about it, I thought, well, maybe we should just do something more nature-like and put a windscreen or some bushes, trees, whatever we came to agreement with to circumference all of the condos at Cheshire Castle Way that would be on lots 14 and 15 and that open, and part of the open area that they have. And he was in agreement with it, and we were in agreement, so I guess we can say we're happy and we'll work together and get it done. So.
A little field engineering to think.
Yeah, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Touche?
Is, do I have the ability to make a motion to add an additional contingency?
You, you may.
I would like to make a motion to extend the easement to 10 feet to include the swale for water containment.
We have a motion to add an additional condition by Mr. Touche, as he just read. Is there a second to the motion? Mr., Mr. Gunlock?
I think it should be more specific and say across lot, across lot 14 and 15.
I agree. We have a motion by Mr. Touche to add an additional condition. Is there a sec, Mr. Years? Seconds the motion for the additional condition. Discussion on the amendment to add the additional condition. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. We are voting just on the fourth condition then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried, and that condition is added to the other three. We are back on the main motion. Discussion, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor, this is for approval of Resolution R-014-031 with the four conditions that were outlined. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries, and Mr. Touche votes no. Mr. Linder?
Thank you, Mayor. Make a motion to approve ordinance 14-846 amending the city's shoreland, wetland zoning, allowing the city to regulate land designed as shoreland that was annexed by the city after May 7, 1982.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Linder?
The Sayer is going to...
He's got one more in him.
Current ordinance requires any property annexed to the city after May 7, 1982 to be regulated by the Dane County Shoreline Ordinance that was in place at the time of annexation. Due to a recent Act 80, it was a legislation that was adopted by the state this past, a few months ago, it allows the city to basically regulate that, that annexed area ourselves. So the proposed ordinance basically just makes the change that the county would no longer be regulating that by their ordinance, it actually would be regulated by city ordinance instead. So the, the language in your packet basically establishes that, that we'll now have standards for only properties that were annexed after May 7, 1982. It is a little confusing because anything annexed before that doesn't have to meet any requirement except for what we have in the city, but anything after 82 will have to conform with the ordinance that you have before you tonight. So with that, the Plan Commission did hold a required public hearing, recommended 7-0 to adopt the attached ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Mr. Diaz?
Which option is more restrictive, the county or the city?
Mr. Sayer?
You know, I'm not, I'm not 100% familiar with the Dane County one, but I would suspect that's probably more restrictive. I think the challenge is that when you have multiple layers in essence of regulation, it becomes challenging. I know Verona hasn't had any specific issues with this in the past. I can, I can rattle off a whole other bunch of issues that I've had elsewhere, but it does become challenging when, when you have projects coming forward and to find out later on that, no, you don't fall under City of Verona ordinances, you fall under Dane County ordinances, and you have to work through the county process versus working through the city process. It becomes very, very challenging and cumbersome even on smaller projects, but from a restrictive standpoint, I would suspect that Dane County is probably more restrictive than what's before you tonight.
Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I would just like to say that I'm opposed to this change, and I plan to be voting against it. I, I, I back up, my property backs up to the Badger Mill Creek and, and I value the creek a lot, and I think that a lot of other, a lot of my other neighbors do as well. And, and when we're talking about shoreline, I would, I personally, I don't, the property was annexed to the city prior to 1982, but I'd be more than happy to operate under more difficult restrictions myself, just because I feel like it protects this resource, and, and if people have to jump, jump through a few extra hoops to, in exchange for protecting our shorelands, I'm, I'm all in favor of that.
Thank you. Mr. Linder?
Making this change doesn't mean that we have to have a easier water quality standard to this. It just allows Verona to control what happens in Verona. I think that's a, a real positive thing, instead of having two different entities to deal with, you have one. So I think that's a real positive. I'll definitely be voting for this.
Mr. Years?
Sure, this is a question from Mr. Sayer about how much land we have in the city that, that would fall under this change.
Mr. Sayer?
The short answer is I don't know off the top of my head. You obviously would have, the creeks would be deemed navigable. You'd have to actually have a waterway that would be deemed navigable, so you have the Badger Mill Creek, you probably have the pond at Gateway, probably all three quarries, I would imagine. Possibly a scattering of other ditches or streams that could float a canoe at some time in the year as well, too, that could be, could be deemed navigable if, if the DNR requested to take a look at that. So it, it may have a broader reach than what we really know, but, but obviously it falls into place, too, as well if it was annexed after 82. The, the short answer is I just, I just don't know, but I know Gateway Pond, I think that's the one that sticks out in my mind. Obviously Badger Mill Creek, any properties along there. The creeks don't concern me as much because they have some very large floodplains, so usually you don't have any issues with that, but any ponds or lakes are usually where the, the conflicts come into place, because the ordinance actually, it regulates all lands within 1,000 feet of, of a lake or a water body, or 300 feet of a creek, so it's not just the properties on the water, it's the properties extending out. So you could actually have a, a property not on the water that was annexed after 82 that would have to comply with the, the Dane County standards at the time of annexation. That's, that's the challenging part. It's not so much the properties on the water, it's the ones that it picks up that aren't on the water, that it's a surprise to everybody that they're, for some reason, they're in a shoreline classification when they're 800 feet from the lake or stream.
Mr. Years?
Thank you. You know, I, I do share some of the same concerns as Mr. Diaz, however, I also agree with Mr. Linder. Excuse me, I'm battling a cold, and it's kind of getting, getting to me. But I also agree with Mr. Linder in that, you know, sometimes I think we do need to make sure that, you know, Verona can control Verona, and so I'm kind of on the fence on this issue. And so I guess if I do end up voting for it, I would really like to see the city work to amend or do what it needs to do with our, our standards to make sure that we're not at a lower standard than what we are today. I, I agree with Mr. Diaz in that we need to protect those resources, so I would really hope that the Plan Commission or city staff or whoever would need to look at that, that they do so.
Thank you. Ms. Ricky?
I just believe that water is our most important resource, and I think this is not some, a decision to be taken lightly by the city at all right now. I, I do think the state and the DNR are a little, I mean, the regulations in writing are, are hard and strong, but I don't know that the, the follow-through is necessarily always done in an expedient manner or anything, so I... manner or anything, so I am in support of the city having more control, but I am wondering how the city plans to manage gaining that control. Can we set up some sort of commission or committee in addition to the other city committees for, to make sure that there's public oversight?
Mr. Sayer?
I'm sure you could. I mean, it would come down to possibly looking at a separate committee, or if there's interest in public work, since it's a water quality standpoint, it could be taking a look at there as well. You know, some committees have their own stormwater committees as well, or some, excuse me, some cities have their own stormwater committees as well, too. So I think if there's the concern out there, I think that's something you could take a look at, if there was interest in that.
Mr. Yours?
The one other question I did have, does Act 80 make this change permissive, or is it mandatory for municipalities?
Mr. Sayer?
It does allow us to do this, the one kind of gray area in Act 80 was, it does put a date on it, so that it has to be adopted by, I believe, July 1st, which I think is, in discussing with our attorney, that we probably wouldn't have to adopt it by a date, but it's an option available to municipalities to regulate that, those areas annexed after eighty-two. But it's not required to follow through with this.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Doyle?
I appreciate wanting to ease the number of requirements and making it easier for developers to create new developments and come here to Verona, but at the same time, I agree with Alder Ricky that water quality is something that you don't really want to mess with. And although I know it's important for Verona to control its own destiny, our waterways affect other municipalities outside of our boundaries, and I believe that we shouldn't be setting separate standards, so I will not be supporting this tonight.
Other questions or other comments? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you, I'd just like to ask for a roll call vote.
A roll call vote has been requested. Other question, Ms. Ricky?
My understanding is that it wouldn't be setting different or lower standards. Am I correct in thinking that?
Mr. Sayer?
There was a model ordinance that was put out the League of Municipalities, and that's the ordinance that we're proposing here tonight. So it's a model ordinance that the League has represented, recommended for municipalities to adopt. So I know some area, I believe, right now is working through an ordinance similar to this, and I would imagine other municipalities, actually, I know of other municipalities across the state that are looking at this as well, too, and most are using that model ordinance. So it would be a different standard than what we have today, but most likely it'd be very, very similar to what other municipalities are adopting right now across the state. Correct. And as the city attorney just whispered to my ear, that the DNR has approved the model ordinance from the League of Municipalities. The DNR worked on that ordinance, and they signed off on it as well, so that's something the DNR has approved as well, too.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Linder?
Mr. Sayer, so if, if, what was a pond of the, was the pond name that you said, if that was deemed a navigable water, how would that affect people trying to put up, would that affect people putting up a deck in their backyard? You know, how would that affect people? Potentially people here, potentially people in the city right now?
Yeah, the example, I mean, it probably would. The example I can give you is from Oconom Walk. When I worked there, we had a property that they wanted to build a AutoZone commercial building on, and in working for that project, it was about eight hundred feet from the lake. That was in with the Dane County Shoreland jurisdiction. And basically, the issues we ran into that were, we had to meet the Dane, we, excuse me, we had to meet the Waukesha County setbacks, we had to meet the Waukesha County use standards, we had to meet every single requirement within that ordinance. And that's where the challenge comes in, where if it does get deemed navigable, and all of a sudden somebody says you should be looking at the Dane County standards, we don't, we don't work with those every day. That's the challenge, is that you then open a new book going, the mystery of what's in it, and that's, I can't directly answer your question of would it be impacted? I would suspect yes. It'd be impacted probably from a use standpoint, it would be impacted from a setback standpoint, it would be impacted probably from an impervious surface standpoint, but you just don't know until you kind of dive into each situation, because it's challenging, it really is, because you have, you have a county standard, in my case, in Waukesha County, that was tailored toward a rural standard. That's the issue. You have a, when you have a county standard, it's based upon larger lots. When you start applying it to lots in Gateway, it doesn't work as well, because you have, you know, a 10,000 square foot lot, and when the county usually looks at half acre, acre lots, that's the big issue, it's just that you're comparing apples to oranges, and it just don't, they don't mesh together at all.
Mr. Linder?
To follow up on that, and I think it'd be a big mistake to not pass this, it doesn't mean we can't have good water quality, we can still create a different ordinance for our water quality if you want to match it up to Dane County's or something similar. I just think if we lose this, if we don't do this now, we lose this control over, I think down the road, we're gonna, we're gonna regret it.
Mr. Diaz?
Did that AutoZone get built?
No, but for different reasons.
Okay. I just had one just general comment. I definitely understand and appreciate how people want to keep control over this ourselves, that makes, that makes a lot of sense to me. But I don't, I don't think Dane County standards are impossible to work through, and I don't, I don't necessarily think we need to get rid of these, these other standards. I mean, from an official sort of letter of the law, they might not necessarily be more restrictive, but like adding another step to the process does allow us to potentially prevent a bad project from going through. And so like I said, I definitely appreciate wanting to keep control over things, and I'd definitely be able to work with any development that I supported if they needed help at the county level, but just like I said, I would rather keep the restrictions such as they are in place right now.
Thank you. Miss, Mr. Touche?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Luke, our, Mr., Alder Diaz, my apologies. You talk about preventing a bad project from going through. These standards are our standards if we adopt them, and we have that same power. If we don't adopt them, it gives Dane County the ability to stop what may be a project that the city of Verona is to be a good project, but Dane County decides it's not. So again, puts it back in our hands. So I think it does give us the ability to stop a bad project, which is what we would want, but we would want to keep a good project going forward. I will be supporting this for that reason.
Thank you. I would concur with the statements that Mr. Touche made, and also with Mr. Linder. I think that this change is a good change. No one's looking at lessening the requirements for the water quality. It allows people in the city of Verona to work with the people elected them and the people that they put in office, so I would urge you to support the ordinance. Other questions or comments? Ms. Doyle?
Just like to add to that, that, you know, I don't think that the county standards would be too hard to adhere to. I know it, again, adds another challenge, but just to reiterate, you know, our waterways affect more than just us here in Verona, and also all the contact that I've received from citizens and constituents on this issue has been to not support this tonight.
Thank you. Other, Ms. Ricky?
I'm just getting more on the fence about this through the discussion, so I'm just wondering, how, what will the city put in place to ensure that the, the quality is maintained?
Mr. Sayer?
I assume you're referring to water quality, or what, and the quality is such an objective kind of term, so.
Okay, yeah, both the water quality and the, the quality discussion around maintaining water quality, in that, you know, the standards that are adopted by the city, if they're the same or similar to and already approved by the DNR, then we need to adhere to them, correct? So how are we going to make sure that that happens? Is it just the city council level, or is there another committee that can make sure that that happens?
Go ahead, Mr. Sayer.
This will not impact, from a water quality standpoint, this does not impact our stormwater ordinance at all. So from a water quality standpoint, there will be zero changes to that because of this. This is merely dealing with the shoreline zoning component of the ordinance itself, which looks at, you know, uses and setbacks. You know, one of the provisions within this requirement is if there's a vegetative buffer already on the property, they do have to maintain it. You know, that's one of the requirements that the ordinance does have in there, that there is a buffer on it you have to maintain. I think up to, I don't have the ordinance strictly from me, but I think it's thirty percent of what's out there right now. So I don't, I don't see any, you know, from a day-to-day standpoint, I don't see anyone's going to notice a change of this ordinance. I think, I think what this does, though, is if an issue does come up where you look at something and it's not reasonable, it's in our control then at least that we can say, you know, it isn't working. So if there is an issue, you can create that committee. Unlike now, if the ordinance, if you don't adopt this, then if there's a standard in place after eighty-two, it's up to Dane County if they want to change it. It's not, it's not up to Verona, it's up to Dane County. So if you adopt this ordinance, if you don't like something in it, you can come back and change it. It's a, it's an ordinance amendment. But if you don't adopt it, then obviously you're still going to operate under Dane County standards. And once again, this only applies to those properties after nineteen eighty-two. Anything before that, it's strictly straight Verona ordinance already right now, so we're only talking about those properties annexed after eighty-two. But the big thing I would recommend is obviously if you doubt this, you have that local control.
Mr. Gunlock?
If you would want to change this ordinance in the future, it would have to be approved by the DNR. It has to, the shoreline wetland zoning ordinance has to have DNR approval whenever you amend And how would you administer this? Typically speaking, Mr. Sayer as zoning administrator would also be the shoreline zoning administrator. So any parcel that came in that was around a navigable stream, he would have to review, he would have to review what they want to do on that parcel in relationship to this ordinance, and make sure that what they're doing follows the letter of our ordinance. If it does not, they would not get a zoning permit, shoreline zoning permit, and if they wanted to put in a pier or a boathouse or a rock wall, they'd be, they would be denied. I mean, that's, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock. Ms. Ricky?
I just have another question about the overall impact. Is this mostly large plots that would be being sold off to developers, or existing land with buildings on it already that people would be looking to expand?
Mr. Sayer?
Right now, it'd be mostly just the existing development of the city. I think if you look towards the future, we're going to probably have some additional properties that would be deemed shoreline as we go towards the Sugar River. Obviously, any quarry could be deemed a navigable waterway. The key is, too, it has to be deemed by the DNR as navigable, so if it hasn't been deemed that, it technically doesn't fall under that requirement. So we do have, we do have some waterways in the city that have not been deemed that by the DNR. But for the most part, the impact today is actually on developed lots. I don't, I can't think of a large undeveloped tract that would be severely impacted by this. The north neighborhood, it's a closed basin with no streams in it, so it's the next area that we're looking at for development, and not much there.
Mr. Gunlock?
The Urbach property would be the next property that's on the Dry Tributary. The DNR has determined that the Dry Tributary is navigable from Verona Avenue South. So anything on, any development on Urbach property would fall under the shoreline zoning.
Other questions or comments on the motion? The motion before you is to approve Ordinance 14-846 amending the city's shoreline wetland zoning, allowing the city to regulate land designated as shoreland that was annexed by the city after May 7th, 1982. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Point of order, there's a roll call.
Roll call vote has been requested. Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
Alder Person Ricky?
Aye.
Alder Person Touche?
Aye.
Alder Person Yours?
Aye.
Alder Person Diaz?
No.
Alder Person Doyle?
No.
Alder Person Linder?
Aye.
And the motion passes four to two. Mr. Linder, anything else from the Plan Commission?
Nothing further, but I would like to thank all you guys for coming to the Plan Commission meetings so often, I like seeing you guys all there. You always catch, you catch something I forget to mention in the meeting, too, so I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. You did a great job of chairing the other evening, and for those that were not in attendance, there was a question asked about whether we would consider having two Plan Commission meetings a month rather than having one really long one, and at this point, the decision was made that we would stick with one meeting, if, you know, a longer meeting if necessary rather than two. So we will continue to have Plan Commission items on the first council meeting of the month. We will move then to the Finance Committee. Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We only have one item for you tonight, and that would be the payment of the bills, so I will make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of $582,384.31.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Linder. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. Notable expenditures this evening are, we have an expenditure for the Hammersleigh Stone Company, for the Lincoln Street Project, water to replace the water main, $160,165.80. Another notable expenditure is for the Madison Metro Sewer District, and this is for Cathedral Point, an area in Cathedral Point, Prairie Oaks and Scenic Ridge totaling $149,043.90.
We have a motion and a second. You've heard the explanation of the major expenditures. Are there any questions for the Finance Committee or staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills, amount totaling All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and I've heard there's nothing else from Finance, so thank you. We'll move on to Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number nine, C1. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution R-014-032 correcting a street name from the Pinehurst Drive to Pinehurst Court.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche?
The city has prepared an affidavit of correction to change the name of a portion of Pinehurst Drive to Pinehurst Court. This roadway was inadvertently labeled incorrectly during the plating of this subdivision. This change will only impact the roadway extending east from Scenic Ridge Drive into the cul-de-sac. The city has already notified homeowners, utilities, emergency responders, and Dane County of this change. An affidavit of correction is required to officially change a street name. Staff has no concerns with the proposed affidavit, as the portion of the street is already signed as Pinehurst Court.
You've heard the explanation from Mr. Touche. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Yours?
This is aside, I just wanted to make sure that our computer thing here hasn't taken us off, off the air.
Oh, it looks like it has. It is shutting down. That's yours? Oh, yours is shutting down, okay.
Oh, way to throw us off, Adam.
I just wanted to make sure that we're not.
Okay, we'll make sure since Bill's back here that we're still on the air.
Well, what cracks me up is it's already labeled Court.
So you've heard the explanation, are there any questions from the council? The motion before you is to approve Resolution R-01, R-014-032 correcting a street name from Pinehurst Drive to Pinehurst Court. All those in favor?
Point of order, do we lose quorum?
We have five now.
Which is, we need six for quorum, right?
We do.
That's why I hurried.
We will, we'll have to wait until the sixth member comes back.
I made it back. I didn't think we have quorum anymore. Oh, okay.
Okay, we have, a quorum is back. We were about to take action on agenda item C-one. We have a motion and a second. This is the resolution, correcting a street name from Pinehurst Drive to Pinehurst Court. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and it has been approved. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number nine, C-two. I would like to make a motion to approve resolution R dash zero-one-four dash zero-three-three, approving a development agreement for the Cathedral Point Phase Four development contingent upon city engineer approving construction plans with revisions.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The developer of the Cathedral Point subdivision is seeking approval to begin Phase Four of this development. This phase includes forty-eight single-family lots located along East Whispering Pines Way, Winchester Pass, Winchester Court, and Cranberry Pass. Under the terms of the agreement, developer agrees to construct public improvements requiring the phase in, required for this phase, including the reconstruction of the southern segment of Locust Drive extending south to the city limits. Construction is scheduled to commence on or about June ninth of this year, with a substantial completion date on or about September twenty-sixth of this year. The city will inspect all construction activities and build a developer on a time and materials basis. Prior to city acceptance of, of improvements, the developer shall provide the city with lien waivers for the construction of the improvements, and all fees associated, associated with this phase must be paid in full. In addition, the developer agrees to maintain a letter of credit to provide separate assertive, that's a word I'm not used to, until completion of reconstruction and widening of Locust Drive Bridge. Approval of the development agreement would be conditional on approval of the final stormwater and grading plans by the city, and the granting of an easement on the interior circle of Winchester Court.
We have a motion and a second. You've heard the explanation from Mr. Touche. Are there further questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no questions or comments, the motion is to approve resolution R dash zero-one-four dash zero-three-three, with the contingency mentioned by Mr. Touche. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Touche?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item nine, C-three, I would like to make a motion to approve awarding a contract for the city's two thousand... Actually, let me restate this. I would like to make a motion to postpone... Gosh, how do I do this one? Reject, thank you. I would like a motion to reject a contract for the city's 2014 street rehabilitation program. Put simply, we received one sealed bid. I'm sorry, that's my motion.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Touche?
We received one sealed bid for the project. The bid was submitted by Hammersley Stone Company of Fitchburg. We determined that, during the meeting, that the fact that we received one bid and it exceeded our expected amount of four hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars by, the bid was for five hundred fifty-two thousand dollars and exceeded our expectation of four hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. The Public Works Committee agreed that we would be better off combining this bid with next year's rehabilitation project, and putting it out later in the fall when the contractors are more willing to accept bids.
Okay. You've heard the explanation for the motion. Are there questions or comments? Seeing no questions or comments, the motion is to reject the award for the city's 2014 street rehabilitation program. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Touche, from Public Works Sewer and Water?
None, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. We are moving on then to Public Safety and Welfare Committee. Mr. Yours, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve an application for a special event permit for Tritarium Triathlon on June twenty-eighth, 2014, from Race Day Events LLC.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. Race Day Events is seeking to hold a Tritarium Triathlon on Saturday, June twenty-eighth. The event would take place between seven a.m. and noon. Brew Street between Peola Street and Locust Drive is planned to be closed during the event. However, we did have some discussion at, at the committee level that early in the morning, while swimmers are still in the water, if people need to get into those businesses, like Ms. Ricky mentioned, a Pilates class that morning, we will be able to sneak people in and out. But once the bikers and runners begin, that area will have to be closed. We also had some discussion about notification of businesses, because most of the businesses along Brew Street will remain open throughout the event.
Thank you, Mr. Yours. You've heard the explanation again. Are there any questions or comments for the committee, for city staff? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve an, an application for a special event permit for the Tritarium Triathlon, Triathlon on June twenty-eighth. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve an application for a special event permit for a license for Verona Fest on August first and second, 2014, from Mike O'Brien of Ice Inc.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. Verona Fest is an annual festival as a fundraiser for Eagles Nest Ice Arena. This event will be held on Friday from five p.m. to twelve a.m., and Sat, excuse me, and Saturday, twelve p.m. to twelve a.m. Plant activities include various games, food, as well as a beer tent. Families will be allowed in the beer tent for its entirety, because that were, that's where the food will be sold, as well as some of the games take place.
Thank you, Mr. Yours. Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve an application for a special event permit for Verona Fest on August first and second, from Mike O'Brien, Ice Inc. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. Next, I'd like to make a motion to approve an application for a temporary Class B beer license for Verona Fest on August one and two of 2014, from Mike O'Brien, Ice Inc.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Yours?
It's the same event, so there's really no need to go over again.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, you've all heard the motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve cigarette and tobacco license renewals for the 2014-2015 license period.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Yours?
This is a yearly thing we have to do as a city. There were no issues on any of the background, backgrounds of these businesses.
Thank you, Mr. Yours. Questions, comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the cigarette tobacco license renewals for the 2014-15 license period? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Yours?
Thank you. Lastly, I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor license renewals for the 2014-2015 license period.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Yours?
Much the same way, this is the, the time of year where we make these renewals. However, I would like to make one note in your packet. The businesses of Avanti's and the Height House are in yellow. They are ineligible to be considered at this time, but the rest in the packet were recommended for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Yours. Questions or comments? Seeing none, the motion before you is to approve the liquor, I'm sorry, Mr. Linder?
I didn't quite hear the, who were the two? Avanti's and who else? The Height House? Okay. Thank you.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, seeing none, all those in favor of the motion approving the liquor license renewals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Is there anything else from Public Safety and Welfare Committee?
Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yours. We are on all business. I would accept a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche to go into closed session. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Linder. And we need to state if, I'm sorry, Mr. Touche, you made the motion. Can you read the agenda item? It has to be written.
The, the city attorney, Brian Kleinemeyer, will be attending the city council meeting to provide an update on the status.
Actually, in, it'd be...
Oh, the highlighted part, got it.
Yep, thank you.
Case number one-three-CV-three-seven-one-seven, Local three-eleven, IAFFAFL hyphen CIO versus City of Verona and the Verona Joint Fire District, Dane County Circuit Court, currently pending.
We need to read the next part.
The city attorney, Brian Kleinemeyer, will be attending the city... Nope. The next part. Bill's got it.
There we go.
The common council may convene in closed session as authorized by section nineteen dot eighty-five, parentheses, one, close parentheses, parentheses, G, close parentheses, of the city of Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with the city of Verona legal counsel who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the city and with respect to litigation in which it is involved. The common council may convene in open session and discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in closed session.
That is the motion by Mr. Touche, and it's seconded by Mr. Linder. The motion to go into closed session requires a closed, a roll call vote. Mr. Burns, if you would, please.
Alderperson Touche?
Aye.
Alderperson yours?
Aye.
Alderperson Diaz?
No.
Alderperson Doyle?
No.
Alderperson Linder?
Aye.
Alderperson Ricky?
No.
Three-three.
And I, I will break the tie to go into closed session. I will vote aye. Session, we are on agenda item eleven, eleven-one. Do we have any motions before us at this point? Mr. Yours?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the operators' licenses, which you will find in the back page of your packet, with the contingent upon approval of the background check from Chief Coughlin.
We have a motion by Mr. Yours. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Touche. Are there any questions, comments on any of the operators' licenses? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We are under announcements. Are there any announcements this evening? Mr. Yours?
One last time, you know, we talked about this earlier in the meeting, but I wanted to make sure people heard that we will be having an open house at the fire station on Wednesday. And what were those times again, Bill?
It's scheduled from six-thirty until eight p.m., although the team will be available later if there's interest.
Thank you. So, I, I really hope people come out and attend. We tried having a meeting earlier in the year, and it wasn't as successful, so I'm really hoping to see more of the public there.
Thank you. Other announcements? Ms. Doyle?
I'd just like to announce that I'm having a listening session here at City Hall on Saturday, June twenty-first, at ten a.m. Anyone in the city or outside is welcome to attend, and this will have a focus on just easing accessibility for our bike system, and what improvements can be made to that, so I can bring that back to the Regional Bike Plan Commission.
Thank you. Other announcements? Seeing none, motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.